We're at six, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Bronlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the blessing of today, the promise of tomorrow, and everything that you bestow upon us. May we serve and lead in your honor, in your name, and your likeness. In your name we pray, amen. Please stand and face our flag for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number five will be public comment. There was a sign up sheet on your left as you entered the room. They will call your name to come to the podium for three minutes of public comment. Don't worry if you missed the sheet or didn't know there was one at the end of the sign ups. I'll hold the audience for anybody that has anything to say. So Madam Clerk, I'll let you take it from here.
So first up, we have the Adaptive Surf Project.
Get that man a microphone so everybody can hear him at home.
Everybody, my name is Josh Gilliken. I'm part of a group, the Adaptive Surf Project, North Carolina edition. We've actually been doing this for, going on our ninth season this summer. And our goal is to get people to the beach and even on a board that typically just wouldn't be able to, wouldn't even think it possible. We started out with a lot of people in wheelchairs, spinal cord injury, but we've broadened out to our local autism centers to try to bring any families that could benefit from a day in the sun on the beach with like-minded people that can keep everybody safe and just having fun. And it's been an amazing group just for friendship and for community. But, you know, we've also had some pretty awesome moments of young people and older guys getting on boards for the very first time and feeling that little bit of propulsion underneath them. And I hadn't been a surfer prior to my accident, but since then, I've gotten kind of addicted to that feeling. So, and again, the group is at least that beneficial, just having the community. So we've decided to now, in our later years, we're coming to some of the town councils to try to basically just introduce ourselves and also say, let's, let us help you guys to get your beaches accessible and bring as many people out as possible and just try to fill those holes that haven't been filled yet. So thanks for the time and we'll be back with a little bit more information for you in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilliken, if you would, please raise your hand, Chief Mathias. That's our fire chief, Billy Mathias, back in the back. He's also our ocean rescue coordinator, or formerly ocean rescue coordinator. He has my personal cell and my email address. If you would please make sure to get that before you leave. Reach out to me directly and I would love to help you out in any way I can. Thank you for being here. Yes, ma'am.
Next up, Melinda Stallings.
Good evening, ma'am.
Melinda Stallings, 101 Kakena. You guys may not know who I need to talk to, but I was, and I looked on the website. But I'm just wondering, not because we're an older island, but I was just wondering about CPR classes, if that's something. And I looked on the website and it looks like maybe it was done before with, through the American Heart Association. But, I mean, I'll do the legwork. If you just lead me to the right place, I'll be happy to coordinate it. But anyway, I just thought it's something we may want to think about.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, task you immediately was reaching out to Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley. Find out when we have them. If we don't hand them, oh, excuse me, there's Mathias in coffee back there. Please get on ASAP and we'll follow up next month. Thank you for coming.
Jamie Vogel.
Good evening, Jamie.
It's on, okay, good. Mayor, Commissioners, and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So I just want to give a quick plug ahead of the town announcements, which I'm sure will be a part of the Emerald Isle St. Patrick's Day Festival announcement, which is this Saturday. So I just wanted to give a quick plug for the St. Patrick's Day Festival. The Vice President of the Business Association, who puts on the event, we have a committee which is very highly supported by the Town of Emerald Isle and we're very thankful. We wouldn't be able to pull off a 30,000 person event without the support of the Town of Emerald Isle or the many sponsors that help along with the event. Crystal Coast Tourism Development Authority. And if you didn't know that, the Crystal Coast Tourism Development Authority, 65% of the tax base that goes to that organization comes from this zip code. So we're very thankful for their support and we're very thankful for your support and we're looking forward to a fabulous event. Looks like the weather might be 75 degrees and sunny. We're holding out. So Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We know it's big crowds. Come early if you want to avoid the crowds, but we're very excited about this kickoff event for the season and just wanted to appreciate you ahead of the event.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And like I said, it's very nondescript. So did we miss anyone in the audience that has anything for a public comment? All right, thank you so much. And thank, all of our public speakers, thank you for coming. Look forward to following up with you soon. Thank you very much. Item six is the We Heard You follow-ups to prior public comments. Printage sheets on the table. There are printed sheets, the follow-ups to public comment from last month. Invite you to pick one of those up on your way out or if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to any of us at any time. Item number seven would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? All right, we have a co-movement.
Tandem movement.
Tandem movement by Commissioner Sanderson and Sawyer, all in favor. Motion is carried, thank you. We have some public announcements on item number eight. Our esteemed PIO, Mark Cruz, will roll the footage.
On Saturday, March 15th, it's time for our annual Emerald Isle St. Patrick's Festival. Come out to enjoy live music, delicious food, arts and crafts, and fun. Don't miss the chance to wear your green and join the fun. On Monday, March 17th at 6:00 PM, we have a Board of Adjustment meeting in the Town Board Meeting Room. Tuesday, March 18th brings two events. At 10:00 AM that morning, join the Emerald Isle Police Department for police educating the public in the Town Board Meeting Room. This one-hour session is all about learning important safety and tips directly from our officers. Later on, March 18th at 5:30 AM, the Golf Cart Advisory Committee meets, also in the Town Board Meeting Room. On Wednesday, March 19th at 9:00 AM, we'll have a Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting at the Community Center. On Thursday, March 20th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, the Stormwater Committee will meet in the Town Hall Conference Room. On Monday, March 24th at 6:00 PM, the Planning Board will hold its monthly meeting in the Town Board Meeting Room. And on Thursday, March 27th at 9:00 AM, it's time for Coffee with a Cop. Meet us in the Town Board Meeting Room for a cup of coffee and a casual conversation with our police officers. There's no agenda, no speeches, just a friendly chance to ask questions, voice concerns, or simply get to know the officers who serve our community. Starting April 1st, Emerald Isle Beach parking passes will be available for in-person pickup. Also, on April 1st at 4:00 PM, we invite you to join the Neighborhood Watch Meeting in the Town Board Meeting Room. And our next Board of Commissioners meeting is on April 8th. We encourage all residents to come out, get involved, and stay informed. Have a wonderful evening and enjoy the rest of the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cruz. Item A B on the agenda, it's titled Remembrance of Mayor Vera Gaskins. Obviously, it's so much more than that. Although I didn't get a chance to get to know or spend any time with Mrs. Gaskins, I can somewhat understand her love and commitment to the Town of Emerald Isle and somewhat understand a small piece of her life that she gave to the citizens and visitors and taxpayers of Emerald Isle. But Vera Gaskins, age 97, of Swansboro, passed away peacefully on Sunday, February 20, or excuse me, February 16th, 2025. She cherished her community in Emerald Isle where she lived for 46 years. She served as an Emerald Isle Commissioner from 1991 to 1995. She was Mayor Pro Tem from 1995 to 1997 and from, as mayor, from 1997 to 1999. I would like for everybody to honor Vera, her family, her legacy, and her dedication to all of the above in a moment of silence. So please join me now. I thank you. Vera, please rest in peace. Vera's family, I hope that the pain of your loss is replaced with happy memories and fond recollections. And I extend my sincerest gratitude to the service that you dedicated to the Town of Emerald Isle. It will not be lost on me. Thank you very much. As we move on, item nine will be a presentation regarding the Carteret County Property Tax Revaluation. I don't know who we have here from the tax office. Hello, sir.
My name is Ken Palmer.
Hi, Ken.
Thank you for having us, Board. We appreciate it. If I could, Jennifer, I believe, that presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So yeah, my name's Ken Palmer. I'm with the reappraisal team here in Carteret County. I've been a resident practically my whole life, ever since I was one years old. So just some background information on me. So a reappraisal is where we bring every parcel in the county up to market value, current market value, as of a particular date. This includes all real property. This is land, any kind of outbuildings or other structures that are affixed to the land. This is residential, commercial, agricultural, and industrial. We are mandated by the state every eight years to reappraise property. So we have to do this, the county is required to do this by the state every eight years. Carteret County is on a four-year cycle. So the last time we have reappraised any property was in 2020. This helps distribute the tax burden equally, fairly amongst all the taxpayers in the county. So what is market value? Market value is the most probable price a property would bring in an open and competitive market. It is important to note that the tax office does not create value. Rather, we analyze the trends and patterns that are happening in the market itself. So the buyers and sellers are responsible for that market value. January 1st, 2025, is the effective date of the reappraisal. That's when the value will be declared, all right? So we use the past two sales, past two years of sales data to be able to say this is the value as of January 1st, 2025. Your notices will be hidden in the mail in March, the end of this month. So be prepared for that. That'll be in the, in the mail. Those new market values will be used to calculate your tax bills. However, the one equation we don't have yet is the rate. The tax rate is going to be decided in June. So don't be scared or feel that this is going to be a big hurt, right, to your family or yourself. That tax rate has yet to be set. So the 2025 Schedule of Values will remain in effect until the next reappraisal. So there are four steps to a reappraisal, the first being data collection. So we went out to every property. In Carteret, we actually measured every single wall on your structures, your dwellings, your outbuildings, sheds, all the real property associated with your parcel. We also looked at the exterior features such as roof material, roof type, exterior wall. We recorded all that down and then we went back into the office. When we got into the office, we actually analyzed the sales that were happening in your areas, specifically in those different market locations, right? So we would categorize and say these are similar properties and that would be considered quote-unquote neighborhood. A neighborhood doesn't necessarily mean it's just one subdivision, but it could be multiple subdivisions that are similar in characteristics, such as year built. So at that point, we'll actually develop the Schedule of Values. That's where we start assigning rates to the different characteristics that we had picked up per se, a metal roof or exterior brick foundation, things of that nature. That's what we would assign rates to, to be able to get that final value on your property. The last piece of the reappraisal is the appeal section. So everybody has a right to appeal and the biggest thing we ask of the taxpayers is to do some research, right? So we call it a three-step process. It's to review your property record card, to make sure that everything is correct, whether it's beds, bathrooms, square footage, anything that could affect your property value or may not. But just review that property record card. Number two would be to actually compare, compare your property to similar properties. We are going to be, we do have a web application available on the tax office's website. That web application is going to be available to the public. So you'll be able to go to the website and actually search in your parcel. So 123 John Doe Lane, you'll be able to punch in your parcel number or your address or an owner name. And at that point, it'll actually populate some of the sales in your area that you can take a look at and see what's going on in the market. So where do our values come from? We use those market sales, market value of the typical sale prices in your area. One huge challenge that we face is we don't get to see the inside of your home. We don't get to see whether or not you have a finished attic above your garage, right? That bonus room. We don't get to see if you've done any renovations or remodels on the inside. So that's important information to be able to hand to the tax office in an appeal, in an appeal scenario. So make sure you are auditing your property record card. We only have access to the exterior. We can assume, we can try to do the best we can from the outside. We do ask questions when we go up and knock on the door, but unfortunately, we don't have access to the inside, so we may not always know. So we do this for all 62,000 parcels. We evaluate 62,000 parcels as of one date. If you've ever had a home equity line of credit, you may be familiar with a fee appraiser or a single property appraiser. They come out to your home, they usually go inside, look at all the details of your property, and they'll go through and actually pull comparable sales for your individual property. That's not how we do things in mass appraisal. The industry standards and methods that we follow are usually through rates. So we'll have a base rate for single-family dwellings. We'll have a base rate for that exterior wall, right? That's all in that Schedule of Values. It looks like you have a question?
Oh, no, sir. I'm paying very close attention. I'll save my questions for the end, thank you.
Thank you. So unfortunately, we don't have access to those, that inside of that house. And ultimately, there is that appeals process. That's why it's there. We want, we want you to make sure that your property record card is correct, your value is accurate. So we do use several statistical tools, one being the assessed sales ratio. That is the most commonly used. And what it does is allows us to measure the accuracy of how close we are to a sale. So we use this in a neighborhood, we use this in, at a county level to ensure that we are as close as possible to that market value as of January 1st, 2025. One thing to note is we try not to use foreclosure sales or auctions as those are not typical of market value. We want to see something that has been listed on MLS, that has sufficient market exposure and has been given to the market to really say this is the true market value of this property. So yeah, there's a lot of different areas in the county that have experienced extreme growth. Some have experienced low growth. And we make sure to take care of that during our, during the reappraisal. And here's some of the examples. The first few are going to be in Emerald Isle and then we can go through and take a look at the rest of the county. Now, I do want to lead with this is that just because you see maybe a 50% increase on one of these properties, that does not mean your property has increased by 50%. It can vary depending on that location, okay? So just wanted to lead with that as we go through the slides here. This property in Emerald Isle, 2020 assessed value was $415,403. It was, year built was in 2015. It sold in October of 2024 and the sell price was $975,000. And that's an increase of 135%. Here's a piece of vacant land in Emerald Isle, oceanfront property. This had increased 163%. That sold on October 16th of 2024. Here's another vacant piece of property. This also located in Emerald Isle, seen an increase of 95%. Here's a property on Emerald Isle. Assessed value was $395,579 and it sold for 1.87, or I'm sorry, $1,875,000. Here's another property on Emerald Isle, built in 1996, saw an increase of 122%. And here's some of the other places around the county that also have seen significant changes in the market. Stacy saw an increase of 91% this property specifically. Merriman, this one saw 189%. That's just vacant land. Newport, located in Newport, saw an increase of 87%. This property seen an increase of 96%. Here's a townhome, I believe. This saw an increase of 205%. Built in 2023. Here is a retail, or I'm sorry, medical office in Morehead City that saw an increase of 33%. A house in Morehead City saw an increase of 75%. This historical home in Beaufort saw an increase of 121%. Here's a home in Harker's Island saw an increase of 54%. Another home in Cape Carteret saw an increase of 99%. So, and again, the big thing is, is that what is the market value of your property? I know it's going to be a shock when you see it. However, we do want you to go through the property record card and make sure that your data is correct. That includes beds, baths, square footage, right? Any type of foundation, exterior wall, any of the building characteristics, right? Make sure that we did our job correctly, right? We want you to audit our work. So with that being said, there are tax relief programs. One in particular being the elderly exclusion. I think a lot of people have concerns about the affordability of expected taxes, which is understandable. And we do offer a lot of tax relief programs, which are located on the tax department's website. So make sure you go on there and see if you may be eligible. If you have a question, you're more than happy to call the tax office or email. We do have an email. I'm going to leave some brochures and cards up with the Commissioners here, the Town Board, and you're more than welcome to them, to give them out. So when you file, or if you file an appeal, right? Like I said, that three-step process. Review your property record card, compare your property to the properties in your area, and then, then file the appeal. If you do decide to file an appeal, make sure that you provide the comparable sales that you were looking at or may have witnessed in your area. Make sure you supply photographic evidence of maybe what the condition of your home looks like on the inside, because we do not know that, right? We've only looked at the exterior of the property. Any type of recent fee appraisal. So if you have done a home equity line of credit recently, use that pool, give that to us. That can give us more information so we, that can speed along the process and we can see exactly what's happening with your property when it comes to market value. But pictures are probably the most important. If I would say myself, if you can provide us photographic evidence of what it looks like, maybe you've had water damage, maybe there's mold or something of that nature that we can say, oh, okay, this is what is happening to this property. Questions?
A couple. Can you back up, I think maybe three slides? I was doing the percentages, but I might have missed. I was hastily writing, you were doing a great job.
Sorry.
No, 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 you're great. All right, that's what I needed to see. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I do have a couple of questions and then I'll go first and then I'll open it up to the board. First off, the timeline of the notices, correct me if I'm wrong. You said March to April?
Yeah, so the end of this month, the goal is to send them out on March 26th, right? So they'll be getting into the mail March 26th and then you'll be receiving them as they come through the mail.
Okay. And I know, not a good thing, not a bad thing or anything like that. I know at a county level, there's been some attrition. There's been a lot of spots opened up, a lot of vacancies probably that still need to be filled. Can you speak to, A, how that may or may not affect the delivery or the timeliness delivery of these notices? And if they don't meet your initial stated goal line or deadline, how does that affect the appeals process from a penalties and interest standpoint, if you will?
So what I would say is that it should not affect the reappraisal at all. The reappraisal is totally separate from what's been happening in the vacancy in the county. Yep, and we should be able to get those on time. We do not perceive any type of untimeliness when it comes to those, to those letters.
All right, thank you. Backing up to the mass appraisal technique. Coming from the banking mortgage world, I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, mass appraisal techniques, especially when we did HELOCs or home equity lines of credit, there wasn't always an appraiser that met you at the house, went inside, poked around, took pictures and all that kind of stuff. We had, in that realm, what they called an AVM or an Automated Valuation Model. Sometimes it was comps, what's sold, what's bought, tax values. Somebody wrote by, maybe took a picture, make sure the house was still there so that we could lend money on it. Is that similar to what we're talking about here on the mass appraisal technique?
So we did measure every single house. We went out and took pictures of every single house, took pictures of all the outbuildings on the parcel. And what we do is use a, like I said, that assessed sales ratio to determine how close we are to that market value of your property. And these are properties that have not sold, right? So we take that information and extrapolate out to properties that did not sell.
Okay. And not, and I got you. I just wanted to make sure that I could separate the two.
Great question.
The biggest layman in the room. But for my benefit and if anybody else benefited, wanted to make sure that I was on the same page there. And I can't remember who I was talking to, but double the tax value may or may not be double the taxes you pay.
Correct.
Educate us, please.
Yes, so that tax rate is, it really depends on the tax rate, right? So your value may have gone up 50% or 100%. That doesn't mean that the tax bill... That doesn't mean that the tax bill, right? When you receive that in in August or the summer of 2025, that doesn't mean your tax bill is going to be twice or 50% more or 100% more. It solely depends on that tax rate. And so when you file, if you if you do decide to file an appeal, just to reiterate that it is the concern is about value or there's a data discrepancy, right? Because that's what we can handle with the tax office. That's what we can we can adjust, we can we can help with.
My last question, I'll be quiet and open it up to the board. When those reevaluations came out or come out, the new rate will be included on those and or they will not?
The the new rate will be decided in June. So there's a budgeting process that goes through and then there's also the the a final number, right? For the total value between jurisdictions and the county. And then ultimately that rate will be set by the public officials.
So let us not waste our time on appeal until we get our new rate? No, I'm just kidding.
No, I would say i- if there is a concern with value, if there is a concern with the data, make sure you do appeal, right? We want you to do you, we want you to, right? If there is a concern, right? If there is an actual, something we can fix.
That was 40% tongue-in-cheeks, 10% real. But if there's a concern with value, appeal the value when you get the notice. Value and nothing else aside, appeal your value if you believe that it's different.
Correct.
Follow the steps and then when the rate comes out and then we are where we are. Is that right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'll be quiet now. Opening up any questions for the board?
Thank you for the presentation. That was very informative. And our responsibility as commissioners is to correlate how this reappraisal, the the rates and all, how that aligns with our future economic and redevelopment plans and and development plans in our community. And so how would that affect our like homeowners, like wind and wind and flood insurance? Does that appraisal affect that?
It it should not. As far as I know, this is just for tax purposes. Insurance is a whole separate sector.
And you said you use like a market data and comparable sales and where did that data come from?
So that we declare whether or not it's a qualified or unqualified sale, that's usually done through market exposure, right? When you list it through a Realtor, it's listed on what we call MLS or multiple listing sales. That can give us an indication that it is given to the market. It's on the market. Anybody can come in and bid or they can choose to negotiate, right? And that declares that market value of that property.
And and now does a use of a of a property affect the tax rate? And I'm not talking about like commercial, like a residential property that's used as a vacation rental generates income and revenue. Does that is that taken into consideration or not?
It does not affect the tax rate, but you could probably assume that when you have a large number of people buying rental properties and renting them out, that is going to be an increase in that area, just based on the fact people are wanting it, right? It's an investment versus just a normal single family. You know, I want to live in this house. But just want to make sure I'm telling you correctly.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both. Any other questions from the board?
One of the, yes, are there going to be any tax rate exemptions for like veterans and and seniors and?
Yes, so there are multiple exclusions on the tax department's website. Elderly exclusion is is a big one that people aren't aware of. And then when these notices come out, it makes people get to thinking of how can I get a tax break, right? And that's when people start to realize what can I use to be able to lower my tax bill? And one of those is the elderly exclusion. So I believe it has to be, you have to be at least 65 years of age and the income limit in North Carolina is 37,900 at the moment. So it's a household income as well. So if there is two owners, right? That's going to be a household income, not a personal, single income.
Thank you. Sorry about the last minute.
No, no, yeah, and there is a veteran's exclusion as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? So thank you for being here, very informative. We appreciate you being here and presenting and answering all of our questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Until you turn your mic on. Just one second and let it go. Hold it for one second and let it go.
Randy Martin, interim city manager, town manager here. Appreciate the opportunity for the county to come. And of course, we eagerly, finance director and I have already been discussing this, we eagerly await the actual numbers, collective numbers, not necessarily individual numbers so that we can proceed with budget planning. But you made the proper distinction and I hope everyone in the room will follow that process because that is your opportunity for evaluating the accuracy or your appeal process for the value, which is an integral part of what ends up being your tax bill, but it does not necessarily in and of itself raise your taxes, which is a major consideration. North Carolina law provides that each municipality in the county, of course, will review these collective totals. As he accurately pointed out, this is a restructuring, if you will, a reevaluation between properties of whether the values are adequately assessed across the board. The municipalities in the county will then determine the tax rate based on the collective impact of that, which we have to publish the status of whether this is a revenue neutral rate that is eventually adopted by the county commissioners and the board of commissioners of each municipality. I know that sounds like a bunch of gobbledygook, but the bottom line is until the rate is set, you do not know what impact it actually has on your annual tax bill. That process will come subsequent to receipt of these values. But I can say that all local governments historically publish and will evaluate the overall needs of the community and not get a windfall out of this unnecessarily. It will all be based on the needs of the community as determined by the board of commissioners. And then the rate established to have as small an impact on the property owners as possible, but it will mean that you or your neighbors may have different impacts based on a uniform rate is what we will establish as a city. And so I appreciate the opportunity, mayor commissioners, and look forward to working with you and keeping tabs on this and keeping you abreast of what the collective impact on the MLS tax base is so that you can make informed decisions on your budget.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thanks, sir.
All right, item number 10 is the consent agenda per legal. When we adopted the agenda on item number seven, the consent agenda was adopted, so we will move forward to item number 11 with a planning board and board of adjustment bylaws update by Mr. Chris Seberg. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Noel. So staff reviewed the most recent versions of each rules of procedure for the board adjustment for the planning board, and we have developed some minor changes for this board to consider. I'll start with the planning board. It's very, very simple and I can give you the methodology behind the change. The only change on that is under section six where it lays out who can call an emergency meeting of the board. It currently shows two, but when you have seven sitting members, it seems logical to bump that up to three. But that is at the purview of this board if they want to.
Chris, back up just about five seconds there. I had cleared my throat. Say again.
Sure. So the only change in the planning board rules of procedure I've recommended is changing under meetings and who can call a special meeting or emergency meeting. Obviously, the chair can, but I've also, it previously stated that two members could do so, but when you have a seven-member board, it seems more logical to have a three closer to a majority calling that if in the absence of the chair. That's clearly up to you guys if you want to consider that change. But that was the only one in the planning board side. On the board of adjustment is just some clerical errors, just more or less listing board of adjustment per their title. I have included adjustments on the membership as per section 2.2.3 of the Emerald Isle Unified Development Ordinance, which basically states that it's five members, not seven. The other two are listed as alternates. So that's correcting that. Under 3.2, I've suggested taking that out because they do not have a vice chair that they vote on. And then changing the term public hearing to evidentiary hearing because it's a more formalized approach. It's not designed for any opinions. It's all fact-based presentation in these meetings. So the previous attorney or attorney firm recommended it. We make that change and it's just we took that opportunity to add that to this if you guys would consider that. That's all I have. There aren't any questions.
Okay. Bullet one, bullet two, bullet three, and then I'm going to turn it over to the board. 10,000 foot and below, change one, change two, change three. Hit us with it one more time and then I'll let the board discuss.
So again, the only change to the planning board rules of procedure is just if you guys want to change the procedure for emergency or or special meeting from two to three.
Got it.
And then under the board of adjustment, it's more or less correcting it based off of what we have in our Unified Development Ordinance as far as the membership. Changing also the term public hearing to evidentiary hearing because it is a fact-based presentation. Public hearings tend to have more opinionated statements and that's not for the board to review and what they do. So that that summarizes all that and the rest is just more or less typographic error changes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll turn it over to the board for questions for Mr. Seberg and or discussion.
Did you say there was no vice chair?
For the board of adjustment, yes, sir. Yeah, they opted not to do a vice chair. They just stuck with the chair and have five members.
But planning board has?
Planning board does have a vice chair, yes, sir.
And then when they switch roles to the board of adjustment, that title doesn't carry over either?
No, sir.
Excuse me. Is that something this board would want to consider adding to the board of adjustment?
Yes, I would ask Mark a question. That's all right, too, while we're thinking about that, too. Mark, attorney, have you had a chance to review this yourself and do you see any any issues with the request that's in front of us today legally?
Mr. Seberg and I did go over it. I had no issue with any of the proposals. It would be at your discretion if you wanted to approve or deny them.
Okay, thank you. That was my main concern there.
If I could, the only comment I'd make on the vice chair, the alternative would be whoever's present could elect for that meeting in the absence of the chair, a vice chair.
So for that meeting, they can elect a stand-in chairperson?
Yeah, in case somebody had to be excluded for a conflict or something, that does periodically happen.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, both. Anyone else? All right, there are suggested motions on your green sheets. I'll leave it open for discussion or entertain a motion. Commissioner Sanderson, with the motion to approve, planning directors recommend to change to each document as written. All in favor?
Aye.
See any opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you so much, sir. All right, item number 12, purchase of a used ambulance for the summer of 2025 in cooperation and with support of Coast Guard Station Emerald Isle, our esteemed fire chief, Billy Mathias. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having me up here tonight and it's always a pleasure to see y'all. Pleasure to see our citizens of Emerald Isle. So what I kind of want to preface what we're about to see here. So this data is a collection of data for at least five, six years that we've been working on in the Emergency Services Task Force team. And so that group met in February, had this presentation, and I feel really bad for Commissioner Alicia Sanderson as far as having to have all this data put in front of her within an hour. So I just wanted to preface this. There is a lot of work that has gone into this as far as our emergency response on Emerald Isle and keeping our response times down and providing a, in my opinion, platinum level of service to everybody, Coast Guard Road, center of town, business district, east end of town. So as we go through this, if there are more questions, commissioners, by all means, I have all the information over those years as well as the citizens. By all means, I will answer those questions as well. So this slide here, the picture that you see there is an excerpt from the 2022 presentation when this committee first met identifying the concerns between then our Emerald Isle EMS and our Emerald Isle Fire Department. And as you see there highlighted, there was an increased response time for incidents. On the fire side, there was an increased response time to the point in Coast Guard Road, dealing with ocean rescue, dealing with structural fires. Our apparatus can only go a certain speed. We have 35 miles per hour down Coast Guard Road. It is a winding road. We are held to the same standards as everybody else on the roadways as far as miles per hour. But as far as lacks of oxygen to the brain in the unfortunate event of an emergency, medically, you see there the one to three, the five and the 10. As we go through this, we will, we actually want to be in that one to three minute timeframe where we're at for the western part and the eastern part of town. We are at a five-minute response. Unfortunately, down Coast Guard Road, we are at a 10-plus minute response along Coast Guard Road. There it goes. So this is tracking our calls for 2024. And what we see here, we see an increase in our emergency medical calls, 937. And 584, that red bar is actually the EMS calls transported. As we look back, still there? As we look back, we see that increase from 23, 22, as we were coming out of those epidemic years, there was a high increase there, but our transports have steadily increased over those years. We recently switched October 1st of 2024 to a different electronic management platform that allows us to pull these heat maps for Emerald Isle and see where our calls are landing. So this heat map that you see there in that picture is actually from that time period there, October 1st to January 31st, which in my opinion, and many of y'all's opinions, would be the slow season. With that, we see our slow season, even in our winter time, we have a 10-minute response time to Coast Guard Road due to the traffic, stoplights, miles per hour, apparatus. We have an increase in traffic throughout those winter months, no shoulder seasons here. This picture shows a 2022 data based on tax records. There was no play on words here with the tax department being here in this, but this, they did allow us to get this data from them. We had a gentleman on our team then by the name of Greg Flynn, who worked with ArcGIS, and he was able to take that permanent resident population on those addresses and utilize ArcGIS to show where our permanent population is at rather than look at our summer population, which is everywhere when people come to Emerald Isle for the summertime. But your green zones are zero to four minutes and those are based off of Fire Station Two and Fire Station One as they currently sit. As we move towards the west to Coast Guard Road, you get into that blue zone, four to eight minute, and then the yellow zone, eight to 12 minute. Again, this was going on three years ago now and we are approaching those 10-minute marks even to get onto Coast Guard Road. This graphic is one that we were able to gain from the state and some of their software. But in 2024, we had those 937 EMS incidents. Out of those 937 EMS incidents, we had 274 come off of Coast Guard Road. So we are wanting to see if we can do So we are wanting to see if we can do a temporary placement of a third advanced life support ambulance. We not only have a need for EMS down Coast Guard Road, we have a need for fire, we have a need for all of our services that we utilize here in Emerald Isle down Coast Guard Road. But being that the highest call volume we have is currently EMS and that is dealing with people's lives, not that fire, doesn't our ocean rescue, doesn't rescue in general, but we see, we're seeing more of that. We can track that better. So we are proposing from May 21st, week before, the Wednesday before Memorial Day weekend, to September 1st, which is Labor Day, 104 days. With our friends' cooperation, United States Coast Guard Station, we are able to pull out our peak hours and so we're able to see in our data tracking that our peak timeframe during that season or those dates really starts kicking up at 10:00 a.m. and then it kind of declines at 10:00 p.m. Proposing two personnel, those two part-time personnel wouldn't necessarily be on that truck. We would put a full-time employee that knows the island, knows the gate codes, knows a little bit more about SOPs and SOGs response-wise. But that totals 2,496 total hours. So we talk about options of Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Sanderson have seen this one before. So we've looked at all the options and so we can rent an ambulance, $250 per day at 104 days is $26,000. There is a fee if we go over the miles. The unfortunate aspect of this is we have a 30-minute one-way trip to Carter General, not to mention if we're having to take somebody to New Bern or Navel on Camp Lejeune. We were able to, we would be responsible for that maintenance on that rental ambulance. We would actually have to do check-ins depending on the mileage that we hit. So essentially each month throughout the summer season, that truck would have to come out, get checked, so we can send it back to the company that rented it for them.
That is the actual ambulance as well.
You beat me to it. That's not a stock photo. That's the actual unit, right or wrong?
That is correct. Commissioner, Mayor Holland, sorry. Yes, that is the actual ambulance. That question came up in our ESTF meeting and so that's what we call a type three ambulance. I couldn't give you a year because it didn't give me a year on their website. Called them and so I asked a couple of questions as far as how much the mileage would be as far as over the 2,000 miles and that's when I found that information out. And so the next bullet point there is 71 of those incident calls in 2024 came off of Coast Guard Road during that time period that we're looking at. I know it says May 23 there, but that was that Wednesday before Memorial Day weekend. And so 17% of the calls that we've seen during that time period last summer actually did come off Coast Guard Road. The third ambulance would take third-out medical calls as well. So whether it's a rental or our next option, it would be a new-to-us ambulance. Deputy Chief William Coffey has worked with the company in finding this apparatus and it is currently on hold with some, a couple of phone conversations, a couple of emails, but we feel that this would be the best option. It is a 2016, it is a diesel type one, very similar to our newer ambulance that we've had in 2019, 138,000 miles there. Service obviously would be on us. We would purchase this one and it would serve as a third-out ambulance for the summer of 2025 and a reserve ambulance through quarter of 2026 because we do currently have two ambulances on order. Unfortunately, those lead times are anywhere from 30 to 36 months currently on ambulances and fire engines. The cost of that ambulance that you see there, that is the actual ambulance, is $32,500. So before I start on this one, and I felt like Jen was kind of giving me an omen when she asked me, but I apologize, that staffing number there, I did not change it. I'm not sure how that got in there. The actual staffing number is that number there. So this, for this column, this would apply to both of those there and that total is actually $48,000 and some change. So we look at the two options that we have here. A rental ambulance that we're responsible for, maintenance for, we also have additional mileage there. And we look at our staffing, the staffing asked there for those two part-timers is based off of our average hourly rate for our part-timers and so that would accumulate into $22,140. The one positive aspect of that would be after quarter one of 2026, we could resell this unit and I am shooting really low on that highlighted section there of $10,000 to $15,000. I do feel that we could probably get at least 20, if not more, for that ambulance when we resell it, but obviously don't want to overextend and come in a little short. And then the quarters being free. Chief McDougal and I, the Coast Guard Station Emerald Isle have been in many conversations. We do have a signed MOU that he has presented to legal and the federal government has been approved. And so what this does is provides us with a place to have our crew members do their reports, common areas, even down to getting meals. They can pay, I think it's $1.40 for breakfast or $5 and some odd change for lunch. Chief McDougal could give me more details on that. But it would house our employees for 12 hours and they would also provide us shoreline power. That ambulance would be right there in front of their garage. So this is where we kind of get our staffing from, our minimum guidelines. NFPA, as if you don't know, it is a guideline for the fire service and EMS service, emergency medical services. However, in the unfortunate event that somebody dies, somebody loses their life, there's a near miss fatality, NIOSH comes in and takes NFPA and puts it into law. And so try to trend closely to these numbers as we can in the event that that does happen. However, this was just to give a brief to the ESTF that there's currently a hold in North Carolina on this, but ASHA is proposing an emergency response standard that the state of North Carolina is opposing. And we, myself and Deputy Chief Coffey, have been in several meetings and conferences about this. Just want to say thank you. I do feel that working closer to the United States Coast Guard, we have over the last two years, is going to be beneficial. I know Chief McDougal is very excited as far as that is concerned, whether it's in the water operating with them. We've got an April boat class, search and rescue class coming up with them. Whether it's somebody needing medical who's out on a boat, we'll have at least for 12 hours a unit there that can put their equipment on there, possibly provide lifesaving skills to somebody out there in the water. But I do feel like it's a great thing for us and if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Billy, thank you for your work, excuse me, your work and research in this. I've thankfully, humbly served on the Emergency Services Task Force for two and a half years now. Again, I learn something new all the time and inner workings on what you all do to save and protect lives on a daily basis is nothing short of amazing. I see it's an amazing opportunity, especially given the fact that our current response time is down at the end of Coast Guard are eight to 12 minutes. Can't see anybody being terribly upset with this proposal, especially given the fact that you've done all the legwork, you've done all the hard work. We have the money, yes or no?
In the packet, we do have a proposed budget amendment. And using fund balance in this situation was the simplest solution, I think, with the caveat that we do plan on reselling it at a later date. We might, like he said, we might not get the full amount back, but we can put that right back into fund balance. So that would be the proposal for the apparatus.
Yeah, sitting in the meetings, sounds like a wonderful idea. I wanted to get you to add that portion on how, where, how do we pay for it and all that kind of stuff, maybe save the board a question, but I'll be quiet once again and open it up to the board for any questions.
Yeah, I've been on that committee since the beginning, working with the chief and his help, all the people out there. And it's amazing the work they do and I wholeheartedly support what they're saying here and we need it, bottom line, for Emerald Isle and for this response time and have this opportunity with the Coast Guard to work closely with them, with a federal agency like that and build up a rapport. It's a great opportunity for Emerald Isle, so I highly recommend the rest of the board getting behind this.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I love it. I think it's a creative solution to a problem that's been needing solved for a long time. So kudos for that, for you. And I know there's a lot of people behind you doing a lot of great work and like the others have said, the more we can joint operate with our Coast Guard friends down at the end of the point, that's all to the good. So thank you. I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
Chief, I applaud the innovative thinking. I think that's a really cool idea to reach out to the Coast Guard and get a mutual cooperative benefit there. What would happen, though, if the government pulls the plug, the federal government pulls the plug on the U.S. Coast Guard Station Swansboro?
So that conversation had been had and I cannot take all the credit for that location or that idea. Our town planner, Chris Seberg, we were sitting after the budget retreat there in January and actually we had the conversation in mid, I don't know if it was on the break or not, but that actual question did come up and I had already had that discussion with Chief McDougal where he had met with his two-star that was down visiting the facility and there was no plans in the near future, at least while Chief McDougal's there and he's scheduled to be there until next summer of that station shutting down. But the town planner, Chris Seberg, actually was like, hey, I'm about reaching out to them to see if it would even be a possibility. And so that kind of sent us down that rabbit hole and getting MOU stood up and then sending it up again through there legal. But as early as January of this year, I've had that conversation with Chief McDougal and there was no plans of that in the next 12 months at least. I can't see anything past that, obviously, yet.
That is really good thinking. I like that, that way of working mutual with any other agency that we can. And my thoughts on this project is that we're a community that's geographically challenged. We are barrier island that's very narrow, two-lane roads most of the way and we have an aging population. I use GIS all the time. Also, the data shows that we are an aging population and growing still with families and stuff. So if this project saves one life, it's worth it.
Thanks, Mr. Seberg. Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I make a motion to approve a mutual agreement with the U.S. Coast Guard for use of facility for temporary replacement of the ambulance.
Commissioner Sanderson with motion one, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the used 2016 ambulance.
All right, Commissioner Taylor with motion two, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried.
Make a motion to approve the general fund balance budget amendment.
Commissioner Sanderson with motion number three, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
If anybody needs beach safety magnets, they're at the back of the room, just came in. I do plan on getting them out to the businesses this week, but they are at the realty companies already.
Thank you so much, sir.
Great job.
All right, item 13 will be the update on the North Carolina League of Municipalities' health benefits insurance pool closure. This is a big deal for any municipal employee. Big and not great news coming down from the League of Municipalities, so I'll invite Inter-Town Manager Randy Martin and HR Specialist Jim Wellborn for an update.
I'll just make a couple of brief comments and then defer to Jen to give you her take on this. One of the key things to this, of course, and I know it's near and dear to the commission, is to keep our employees informed of what's happening. And Jen took some steps towards that. Don't want to steal her thunder, I'll let her comment on that. But the big thing here for the publics who may or may not be aware is the league recently made the decision to shut down their health insurance trust fund, a trust offering to municipals effective July 1 of 2025, which is a really short window to make such a decision. Really regret that they did it in such short manner. However, I don't know all the facts of what drove their decision, but I'm sure it was significant or that kind of drastic action would not have likely occurred. That said, the town of Emerald Isle is in a position, we need to find answers and answers quickly. It will have significant impact on our budgeting process. Towards that end, we've taken some steps. We just learned late last week that one of the preferred brokers that the league has used in their plan for the last several years has stepped up and is proposing an alternative that would, in essence, in simple language, from my perspective, they would take the place of the league and offer something very similar, we're told, to the current plan and keep the current providers. That might be a real interesting opportunity for a transitional year, if you will, when we don't have adequate time to do a full-fledged evaluation and invite numerous potential proposals and so on in the manner that would normally be undertaken. That's typically at least a four to six-month process and we don't have that between now and we've got to do open enrollment and have this ready to go effective July 1. Those things said, the only other thing I would add is we have had interest expressed by some potential other vendors, some encouraging information on that, a couple that have local ties. We're going to not exclude anybody from this discussion and we hope to give the commission a more in-depth update, particularly once we hear some real numbers about what this potential hybrid state plan, if you will, looks like. So I'll defer to Jen for further comment.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so like Randy said, we're on a pretty tight timeframe with this. We were just notified February 24th by NCLM about this decision. And then, of course, usually we do open enrollment, try to do it at the beginning of May before we ramp up for the busy season and then that'll be for our insurance beginning July 1. The insurance, so that group that we talked about is pretty much a turnkey solution. They're trying to literally just kind of step in for NCLM and have all the same coverage, everything. So that's a very attractive option right now. We also have NCHIP, which is another insurance risk pool that a lot of municipalities partake in. And then obviously, my phone has been ringing off the hook with brokers. So I casually talk to, you know, a couple of different brokers, see, you know, what they can offer us and that kind of stuff. NCLM is, they did give us a packet as of last Friday where basically it has all of our data for everything and we can just push that out to brokers to get quotes and they're helping us like streamline that process of getting quotes. So I sent out an email to our staff earlier today, letting them know what was going on. Obviously, you know, we want everybody to keep the same or better benefits than we have right now at the same cost or lower cost ideally. Yeah, so. And then, of course, we can go with something this year just because we're on a tight schedule and then fully reassess in the next following year for July 1, 2026.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I think that it's incredibly important that we're looking for this policy. I like what you and Randy have discovered a lot, but we're under HFMSA currently, the counties, and I just want to make sure that we are not costing the employee any more out-of-pocket than we do right now. So I think those are things that we need to keep in mind moving forward with the budget process in the event that we have to increase our contribution because there's a big difference between an employee makes $100,000 a year and an employee makes $40,000 a year when it comes to meaning your deductible for healthcare.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, questions for Mr. Martin or Ms. Wellborn? Jen, I will ask you and Randy, I'll ask you. Please keep us up to date. Obviously, I know you will via email, that sort of thing. I think it's important for everyone to stay up to date, whether it's the elected officials, our town staff, but also our public and our employees and, for that matter, any potential employees because it's very uncertain, pay for health insurance. You can imagine how expensive it is and the thought of not necessarily not having it, but not knowing where it's going to come from, it's a huge deal. You know, for those that, you know, take care of themselves and take care of others, I would love to see you all continue to search, investigate. take care of others, I would love to see you all continue to search, investigate, find potential solutions. I'd love to see just a little bit more push, if it's not too much trouble, to keep the elected officials and town staff informed, but a little extra push to keep our employees informed, keep our residents informed, because we enjoy the lifestyle that we do, because we have a team of 75 in the winter and 130-some in the summer total, so that we can ride up and down Emerald Drive, drive blissfully ignorant, as I call it, not knowing what goes on and not knowing necessarily the caliber of people that make this town turn around like it does. Keep everybody informed as soon as you can. I'd greatly appreciate it on behalf of everybody that I spoke about. Anything else on item 13? Thank you very much. Item 14, essentials of municipal government. When I was elected in November of 2021, one of the first things that I was offered, invited to attend, was the essentials of municipal government offered through the UNC School of Government. I'll keep it short. We can talk about it a long time, short time doesn't matter, but essentials of municipal government, ethics training, all that kind of stuff, is actually required by state law for elected and appointed officials. It must be completed within 12 months of election day, and is required every time they are elected, reelected, or appointed to a local office. The, I believe, I think I've got a little certificate in my office that says Municipal Government 101. It's a two-day class. We went down to Wilmington, took care of it. You can take care of it online. I think it's very, very important. I get a lot of calls, emails, paper mail, conversations in the grocery store, questions about this. How does this work? Why did that go that way? You name it. And I welcome all those. I expected all those. And thank God for the UNC School of Government. Thankfully, I was able to carve out 48 hours of my time after being elected to go attend that. I learned a lot. I still learn a lot every day. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that this training is required by state law for anybody that's elected or reelected to one of these seats. And we can talk about it if you want, or I would like to entertain a motion to require and hold accountable all newly-elected commissioners and mayors. I'm going to add that to the suggested motion. Any elected official to complete the Essentials of Municipal Government course within 12 months of election and/or reelection to the Emerald Isles Board of Commissioners. Motion on the floor.
I had a question.
Oh, yeah. Any discussion.
I, this is a great course. I think everybody should take it, and I think we could even say it's great if you can go together to take it. There's two pieces here. There's the Essentials of Municipal Government, and then there's the Ethics Training. The Ethics Training one, I think, is the one that's required by law that you sign up and say, in order to run, I promise I'll take this course within 12 months. The state enforces that. I don't know that we have the authority to require it of future boards, but I think we can, you know, strongest possible recommendation, really ought to best practice, all the rest of it. I just question whether we have the authority to require it or not, and it's back to the one cent tax question, where it's not binding on a future board, then it kind of makes a weird thing. So, I think it's a great idea. I just think we should make it a very strong recommendation as opposed to a requirement.
I appreciate that. And to your point, as far as encumbering future boards when it comes to the taxing, holding future boards accountable for any decisions related to fiscal matters with the town, yes. Per rules of procedure, you cannot encumber a future board on a tax, a sunset tax, anything like that. So, you're absolutely 100% correct on that. Mr. Stolato, I'll ask and defer to you. The Ethics Training is required by state law. The Essentials of Municipal Government are not required by state law, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Essentials of Municipal Government 101, offered by the UNC School of Government, also satisfies the Ethics Training. My ask would be to modify, if you concur, agree with me, up to and including changing the town's rules of procedure to require Essentials of Municipal Government or any other class that satisfies that training. So, that's where I'm at right now, and I'll be quiet and let you speak, sir.
Understood. Thank you, sir. So, my understanding is that there are four total events that you all can go to that would apply to your two-hour requirement within 12 months. That is indeed one of them. I would also note that I believe the better place with this would be the rules of ethics that are also required by the state. There, I believe it's the same statute, actually. There's five specific items that must be on that Code of Ethics. We are compliant right now. So, if you do plan to propose this, I would say add it to that. And in any event, this Code of Ethics was passed in September of 2010. So, I would say it would be up for review. It is compliant. I have reviewed it. But even if you don't plan to add anything, it may just be worthwhile to go back through and reread that.
Thank you. And not holding anybody to a vote tonight or anything like that. Obviously, we have several months before our next election. We only have a few before the window of declarations opens, but I've put a lot of thought into this, especially as of late with calls, emails, paper mail. My conversations in the grocery store, they're my favorite. Stop in for a gallon of milk, 45 minutes later, I'm home, but I welcome it. I knew it was coming. And I just really think that this is a very positive next step to board cohesiveness, transparency, and taking out the, I didn't know. Well, you did, or you should, kind of thing. I think it's important for anybody that steps up and accepts the challenge and responsibility of leading our town. It's a day or two. It's a couple of hours. You have a year to do it. Why not? So, we don't have to have a motion tonight. We can table it for further discussion, possibly come back with a potential amendment to the rules of procedure, maybe the Code of Ethics. I don't know that it necessarily has to go that far. Like I said, it's just been on my mind a lot lately, and I know I was, I don't always hit the mark, but I try really hard, fall short sometimes, but going to that little class for a couple of days, I learned so much, and it keeps a lot of things front of mind to me. And hopefully, I get it right more than I get it wrong, but I think it's very important. Like I said, we don't have to have a motion tonight, but I think within the next 30 to 60 days or the next one to two board meetings, I would ask this board to make a decision on that.
Mayor Holland, I'd like to add that for me, it was, I learned a lot. I've been in municipal governments for a very long time, but the class was extremely helpful. And I get this question a lot. Well, why do you have to do it this way? Why? And I was, I was better equipped to answer that question more simplistically and in ways that are easier to understand, that it's not our choice. It's what we have to do. So, that's one of the great benefits as well.
How many hours is that course? I don't know.
It's about, it's two, eight hours a day.
Yeah, two. I went to Wilmington, and I was there for two days and home by, I don't know, 10 o'clock the second night. So, we'll call it 16 hours total. So, a minimum time commitment, almost negligible time commitment when you fan it out over a 12-month period. I'll also add that you're not the only one in the class. I was in a room with, I don't know, man, 60, 70, 80 people from municipalities with one manager and one clerk, all the way up to towns 10 times our size. And it also provided an opportunity for everybody in the room to bounce ideas off each other, learn how a bigger town works, how a smaller town works, what went well here, what blew up over here. I took a ton away from it, and I was gone for half a weekend.
Yeah. To reiterate, I think it's a great course and well worth the time, the minimal time to invest to get the benefit out of it. I'm just thinking we should wordsmith this so that it gets the maximum effect that we're looking for.
I'd be satisfied. It's not up to me. You five are the decision-makers. I'd be satisfied with the tabling of it and further discussion and a potential motion and amendment to our rules of procedure in April. Humbly ask.
I make a motion to table this item for future discussion in the April 2025 meeting and ask that legal counsel get us his final recommendation on how we should move forward with this as far as adding it to our ethics.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Sanduson with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you very much for hearing me out. Mark, did you say that we have the authority to encumber that on a future board?
I'd have to look into that. This is the first I've been asked of that.
Okay.
I'll look into that and have that answer to you before the next meeting.
I believe encumbering, to Commissioner Wooton's point, as far as encumbering a future board, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, was more geared towards encumbering them to keep a tax rate below this or to not charge more for this. But there's a ton of variables there, inflation, depression, all that kind of stuff. I believe that encumbering a future board was more geared towards taxes, monetary, things like that. And if what I'm suggesting or a new draft or final version of that includes encumbering any future boards to attend two-day class within 12 months of being elected, to honor their commitment to serve the people of this town, then as long as it's legal, encumber away.
We're currently operating under the rules of procedure from 2010?
The Code of Ethics is from 2010.
We're operating, there's more who have been seated since December of 2023 under 2010.
Yeah. I was just asking.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to do anything that's consistent with statutes. That's all. I think it's a great idea.
I want to make sure we get it right for a time as.
I think anyone that runs for the seat up here ought to be able to get 16 hours of constituents to understand what we're doing.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you listening to me ramble for a minute. All right. Item number 15 will be the update slash discussion of the Town Manager Selection and Transition Process. Welcome, Interim Town Manager Randy Martin. For those of you in the room that don't know him, that's our Interim Town Manager, Randy Martin. If you recall, he served as our Interim Town Manager prior to Mr. Zapp's arrival, did a fantastic job. Correct me if I'm wrong, 40 years municipal management experience. Is that about right? Not to date you, but to give you some accolades. Yeah, he started like fourth grade or something like that. But welcome, Randy. We're glad to have you here. I appreciate all of your support and guidance so far. We've had some pretty lengthy conversations in a very short period of time. So, welcome and thank you very much for that, and I look forward to serving with you however long you are here to help us out. And wanted to, A, do that, and two, give the board to address the public regarding the Town Manager Selection and Transition Process. May or may not be a lot of questions. I know we've had one closed session where we've interviewed one candidate. I'm going to be quiet for a minute, for the rest of the meeting, actually, and let the board update, the board and Mr. Martin update the public on where we are as far as the permanent town manager. I'm out of breath. You guys go ahead.
While they're getting their thoughts together, I could share a couple of comments if that's appropriate, Mayor and Commissioner. As I've already shared with the board and for the public's consumption, I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to continue in public service in the capacity as interim manager for this wonderful community. I've had an extraordinarily positive experience here previously, as the mayor alluded to, and thus far, we're off to, I believe, a great start with the fine staff you have. The team members are exceptional, as you're already aware, and has been stated. Received the necessary support. We're in day seven. We're just finishing day seven whenever we get in tonight, but so it's early, but I really feel good about the things that we're grasping and putting priorities on those things that deserve priority for this time of year, particularly the budget season and some of the things you've already discussed tonight. As the managerial discussion transitions to a process, I'll be communicating with staff and a number of other ways to ensure as smooth and as least disruptive a process as possible. An important goal is to convey to staff the absolute imperative bottom-line message that this local government relies heavily on them to be successful. These things said, I'm looking forward to keeping open lines of communication with the board, the staff, and the public. I will try to keep you up to date and advised. I look forward to joining the board and as we go through the process, and as you discuss managerial transition process going forward and next steps. We'll be working on the day-to-day stuff to keep us abreast of that and meet our obligations, but I stand ready. I've been through a few of those in my 40 years of continuous managerial service in municipal government. So, I offer my assistance in any way to the board as you move the process forward on that process. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
I'll go first.
Yes, sir.
Let's see. And thank you, Randy. It was great getting to know you, and thank you for stepping up and helping us out through this time. It's really been helpful, and I appreciate your experience and wisdom in a lot of this. So, I know there's been questions about transparency. A couple of things upfront. Necessarily, we have to talk about personnel things in a closed session. That's why we read the little blurb at the beginning that says pursuant to this section of the code. We talk about personnel stuff in a private session, so that, or a, yeah, closed session. That's part of it that might lead to the appearance of a lack of transparency. I hope not, but it might be. But the bottom line, and I thought I'd lay out, you know, what our obligation, because I went through and looked to say, well, what are our obligations in all of this? And really, it's just our duty is to appoint a manager. It doesn't give a lot, there's no prescribed format that says you have to do this and this and that. There's not a checklist. It's a lot, to my way of thinking, it's a lot like hiring people at where I work, in my place of business. And I've done quite a bit of that in the senior executive positions. The two places I look first are inside the organization and referrals, because that's where I found, in my experience, that's where we get a lot of our best candidates that fit and can hit the ground running and fit and align with the goals of the organization. So, that's my own personal experience. I think when it comes to the need to go out and find and hire a town manager right now, I think most towns in North Carolina would like to have our situation, where there's somebody who's done it before. We know what their track record is. They have deep relationships within the community, with the businesses, with the town staff, and everybody else. So, my head automatically goes, and has been referred by dozens of people. Like Jason was saying, I can't get out of my truck at Food Lion with somebody knocking on the door saying, you have to go hire this person. So, I say all that to say, that's been my thought on the process of how we do this, that we are blessed to have a candidate that's readily available, willing to do the work. We can look and know that they're supremely and somewhat uniquely qualified to do the work. So, I think we should move out and take advantage of our good fortune of having that candidate available. So, that's where my head is at on the process.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? No suggestive motion on this tonight, just an update to the public there, sir. All remains to boards.
I was out of town when the decision was made and orchestrated for the specialty, and I was a little confused on what we were meeting about. My problem with this hiring process is I can't look at you guys and tell you I picked the best guy for the job because we only interviewed one, even though I think that that person probably meets the criteria and has all, everything this town needs. He's, you know, the person we've interviewed. We've seen him work. Don't like how it was done, but I have talked with some people, and my first initial response was to open it up and let's interview people. know, my first initial response was to open it up and let's interview people. But I know this board's decision's been made. I'm not going to make some guy travel for five hours away and leave his family to come in for an interview just to have a horse and pony show. So that's why I'm out with it. I'm not happy about it, right, that we didn't get the opportunity to say that we have interviewed multiple candidates for this year. But we are where we're at.
I agree with Commissioner Sawyer on this. And there's no requirement for us to open a door for a senior citizen, or to say yes, ma'am, or no, ma'am. But I think the majority of these people do that. And I feel like we failed our citizens by not at least posting this. And that's on us. And especially when this was part of a campaign in 23 to get rid of Matt Zap and hire, bring, bring Matt, bring Matt back. So that's, that's how I see it. And I agree wholeheartedly with you, Josh. Even if that was a candidate chosen, we should have at least posted it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Mark, is there, or Randy, either one, are there any statutory requirements or regulations that require the hiring or firing process?
No. As Mr. Wooton correctly stated, the only thing the statutes provide is that the board is the one to choose. There are other towns around the state that I've found have prescribed direct rules, but ours do not have that.
Thanks, sir.
On another positive note, if I could, Mayor.
Sure.
I, I was one of the first commissioners, one, most senior went up here now, I guess, hard to believe that. But I got to work with Randy, and as a, as myself, I am very, very, very honored and privileged and feel great that this town's in a good position with Randy right now as our interim town manager. We, we got blessed with him coming back, and that's just bottom line. So we're, we're in a good spot right now as far as him running the town and the way things are going. So I can't give him a better plug than that. So feel honored that we have him here, and he's a guy that you can come to and talk to if you need to. He's a, he's a really, really good guy. So I really want you to know that we've, we've got a person sitting there that we can trust and believe in. And he's going to find the right way for this insurance problem that we've got going on right now with the staff. He's, he's going to be the guy for us. So we're, we're in a good spot right now. So understand that. Thank you.
Mayor Holland, I couldn't agree with Commissioner Taylor more. And as I recall, we, we all decided, or actually Commissioners Taylor and Commissioners Sawyer could not attend that meeting, but we decided that Randy Martin would be our interim on February the 28th. That was a Friday. On Saturday, I'm getting a notice that's been shared by one commissioner that all four commissioners outside myself get called for a special meeting on March the 5th, which is just three business days later. And then finally, it was revealed that two of those called that meeting. And I would just like to ask, what was the urgency three business days later after the appointment of the interim town manager to interview the sole candidate?
I, I was the one that called for their, or drove the calling for that. And that was because my experience again is the quicker you hire a candidate, the better. To get on board, to deal with the budget that's coming up. We got the changing of the tax valuations, and what's that going to mean for the rate? How do we communicate that? The insurance issue had just fallen into our lap, and I will second everything Mark said about Mr. Martin. We're in very able hands with him, and I'm glad that he's here to help us through all this. But my sense of urgency was around capitalizing on the opportunity of having a qualified candidate and trying to get him on board as quickly as possible to minimize the disruption of transition among various town managers, even though, like I said, Randy's doing a great job, and I'm sure that'll be a smooth, a smooth transition to whoever it goes to.
Randy did a phenomenal job for eight months, through the 18, 19 budget fees.
Thank you both. All right. Any other updates on item number 15? All right. I thank you all. We'll move on to item 16. Town clerk, town clerk, I know you have a lot to say. Not a word? Thanks a bunch. Mr. Salado, any final comments, sir?
Just thank everybody for coming out, and I just wanted to let everybody know, I will be attending the lawyer equivalent of kind of what we were discussing earlier for continuing education at the UNC School of Government. I'm going to have in the town later this month. Very much looking forward to that, and good to see everybody out today.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Martin, any final comments?
Yes, sir. I did, be remiss not to recognize another aging public official who has agreed to step up and fill an interim role for us. And he's present tonight. I think everyone knows him or should know him. Rudy Rudolph, as he's referred to, I didn't know his full name was George until this week, but I won't take on him. But it's Rudy. He is a tremendous asset, and we're very fortunate to have him ready to step in and shadow our current planner tonight as he transitions out by the 18th. So I couldn't be more pleased. If I had any reservations about being interim, it was, how are we going to find a planner? We have an opportunity there with Rudy as an interim that is, is a godsend, and I appreciate him. And Rudy, so everybody knows who you are. Okay. And one of the first things we're doing there, just so the public's aware of it and the board for, for information, we had a meeting already with, as we transitioned, with the DCM staff, with the state, that's to discuss CAMA small permit assistance in the interim period. They have agreed to do that, and we're working on the final details of that. So we just want to state that to the public. We'll have available the information on how that transition will work, and they'll fill that role at least through the end of the fiscal year, I anticipate. And then we can, hopefully by then, we'll be in a better position to look at options.
Thanks, sir.
And lastly, I did want to say that it's, again, I've already told you my pleasure in being here, but as the tourism season gears up, there'll be a lot of things going on. Please pay attention. We've got some paving activities. DOT is reared ahead, and because of weather, they're going to be back later this week, and that'll disrupt some bridge traffic for a couple more days possibly. So be sure to look at our social media and website on updates regarding those kind of things that will be impactful for traffic for a short period. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. From the commissioners, Mr. Taylor.
I'd like to say thanks to the fire department, their leadership back there, what they've done. So each time that ambulance goes out and picks somebody up, you, you pretty much saved a life. So think about all the runs it does at the end of the year that it's, it's helped people down there. Because that 10-minute call out is, as you said, you know, five minutes, as we talked about, you know, that's brain damage after that. So I'm really excited, sitting on that board with you, learning a lot from you. And though I want to live near a fire station from now on the rest of my life, want to be very close to one. To Chris there that's done a great job for our service, for our planning department, can't thank you enough. It's going to be fun watching your career as you progress out in the other leadership roles you're getting ready to jump into and stuff. Rudy, thank you for coming and filling the gap. It's, it's great to see your face again around town, and so we're blessed to have you too, just as we're blessed to have Randy. The, the board's, the board's in a better spot by what all y'all have done for us and who we've got here in leadership and Laura and things. And I hope we'll work through that health care insurance stuff that we got. That's our biggest thing on our plate right now, in my opinion, I believe. We're going to take care of the staff, and we'll make sure that when July rolls around, we'll have some health insurance for them, and it'll be, it'll be good insurance. I'll definitely push for what we have to do to make that happen. That's all I got. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Wooton?
Yeah, I'll second a lot of what Mark said. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight, and thanks for all the staff, some great presentations. I know there's a little bit of work in front of us, but I'm very thankful y'all are here to help us with it. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Brownlow?
I'd like to thank Randy Martin for stepping in during the meantime, and appreciate you. Randy and I go back, our boys played baseball together, and we had a good time traveling around the state and watching them grow and play ball together. And very capable town manager when he was at Morehead City, and I was at CAMA, we worked together on some projects together, and very successful in that. Rudy, I've known Rudy for quite a while, a good surfing buddy of mine back there. So he's, he's an excellent waterman, and he's going to be an excellent fill-in for us during the transition period, and I appreciate that. And most of all, I'd like to give the kudos to staff. We're in very capable, and a couple of staff hands right here. These guys can do amazing things. I've seen it. They're very competent, and their jobs are, they're experts, and, and they can make this transition very smooth. They are making it, making a smooth transition. So just very grateful for the people that we have working for this community. And, and I'm going to do everything likewise to ensure that you guys are well taken care of with this insurance fiasco. You're going to be taken care of, and you don't have to, have to worry about that. So with that, I wish everyone a happy St. Patty's Day, and be safe, and enjoy the festival. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sawyer?
Mr. Martin, thank you for coming in and helping us out. Appreciate it. Rudy, welcome aboard. Town staff, you're awesome. Citizens are awesome. Thank you for coming out tonight. I love seeing new faces. We need some more people getting involved, paying attention as it goes on. So everybody have a very happy St. Patty's Day.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to echo everything that you said, truly welcoming Randy Martin again. Randy's phenomenal. I've worked with Randy many times for many years, and it's always been a pleasurable and productive experience. I'd like to thank the Emerald Isle St. Patrick's Festival Committee for everything that you're doing to make Saturday possible, to bring us another quality event to kick off this season, and to all the sponsors who chip in and are making this possible. But it still wouldn't be possible without all the volunteers that we have. So we still have some, I believe, some open slots and volunteers. So if you will, just go look at the town's website and sign up. If you got, if you can't meet the full period, then maybe you can talk to someone and fill in for a couple hours, and see if someone else can fill in the other two. Or maybe you've got a kid that's old enough that they could come in for the rest of your shift. I don't know. Get creative. Staff, all of you, thank you for making us look great. We appreciate that. We need all the help we can get. And Joe, please change the mic.
I've been looking at that thing all night long. Been looking at that thing all night.
You have.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I'm not going to toot the horn of anybody else in the rooms. I feel like the horns have been tooted more than enough. But all jokes aside, thank you all. Our residents and our town staff and department heads, they are our true leaders. They show us the way to get things done. They show us the way that we need to support them in getting things done. Finally, I will send out a special thanks to my good friend, Ann Schrott, and my friend that I hadn't met yet, Ms. Mary Penn Sherlin, for letting me know that her father, Mr. Bud Fitz, Bud Fitzsimmons, they arrived in town yesterday, and as of March 14th, was that three days from now? Yeah, three days from now. 40-year visitor to the town of Emerald Isle, Mr. Bud's, Bud Fitzsimmons will be celebrating his 100th birthday with us here on Emerald Isle. So Ms. Sherlin, and more importantly, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you're out there, happy early 100th birthday. Thank you for sharing 40 summers with the town of Emerald Isle. We appreciate you very much, sir. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.